Okay, I call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is January 11th, 2016, and please bear with me, this is the first meeting that I've chaired in a while, so it's been several years. Right now, we're going to, Commissioner Ronnie Reese will lead us into invocation, and first we'll have a moment of silence for William Clinton Candidate. That's Clint Candidate, for those who knew him. He was a well-loved engineer of this county, and he's gonna be sorely missed. I've known Clint for many years and served with him on the Building Services Advisory Board. He lived in Bethlehem. But let's go ahead and do the invocation and pledge of allegiance, and then I'll say a few words.
Let's pray. Lord, we come to you today, Wayne. Thank you for another good day you've given to us, for the many blessings you give to Alexander County. Thank you for those who are here tonight. Pray that you would watch over us, help us to do things that would move the county forward, and make wise decisions as we go through the process. We pray for our emergency services, our Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Highway Patrol, all of those who are putting their lives on the line for us every day to protect us. Just watch over them, keep your hand upon them, guide us through this meeting, and we ask all these things in your name, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we get to the Commissioners' Report, I just want to read a little bit of the obituary. William Clinton Candidate, 73, of Taylorsville, passed away Tuesday, December 8th, 2015, at Frye Regional Medical Center in Hickory. He was born in Spartanburg, South Carolina. He was a veteran of the Air National Guard. Clint was a mechanical engineer and owner of MCL Engineers. He was a member of St. Luke's United Methodist Church, where he was a member of the Fellowship Bible Sunday School class. He was chairman of the Board of Health in Alexander County, chairman of the Building Services Advisory Committee since 2004, an Eagle Scout and scout leader for over 40 years. He is survived by his wife, Anita McGraw Candidate, of the home, son Jeffrey Candidate, and wife Tricia, of Taylorsville; daughter Allison Walker, and husband Chris, of Statesville; grandchildren Tiffany Klein and husband Dustin, Brian Candidate, David Candidate, Alex Walker, and Madeline Walker; and a brother, Rob Candidate, and wife Joanne, of Fort Mill, South Carolina. I got to know Clint on the Building Services Advisory Board, and in personal life as well, not just from that. Clint lived, you know, less than a quarter of a mile from my house, so I'd run into him often in Bethlehem. He was a great guy, loved fishing. He and I talked a lot about fishing on occasion, and he did a great job on the Building Services Advisory Board. I know he served on the Health Board for 30 years, I believe, is what it said. So he was an integral part of this community, and he's gonna be really missed, so I just wanted to mention a word of that. And if we could, let's have a moment of silence for Clint, please, and his family. Okay, thank you. Commissioners' Report, does anybody have anything to report?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, you know, we're coming up on our budget time, and just to let everybody know, we're looking, you know, at anything where we can, you know, get some savings on, and looking at some of our insurance, and when you made mention of that before, so, you know, we're still hoping to be able to, you know, maybe come with some savings there, and some other things. And just kind of, I know everybody talks about expense and cost, but I was just looking at the report that we get that breaks down the 911 communications. It was, it's kind of astonishing sometimes when I get it. For Alexander County, the total calls that came in for the month of January 2015 was like 10,849. Then we move into March, it was 11,000. Total calls, 107,622, and the sheriff, I'm thinking this is a year report, it shows January through December of 15, total sheriff calls, 33,481 calls. So, you know, if you start putting any type of money amount on that, it kind of tells you, you know, what we're looking at, that, you know, you gotta fund things to keep it going, so, but it's kind of amazing to me, I just wanted to pass those figures on. A lot of people don't maybe get that or see it, but, you know, that was kind of interesting for me, that, you know, over 10,000 calls can come in a month, and somebody has to answer them. We'd like to have a response when, you know, when you call that number, so, just some information passing on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask you a question? Who's calling 10,000 a month? There's 40,000 people in the county. What kind of calls are they making, and are they very responsive?
Well, those are just the total calls. The 911 calls were 1,209, so...
Yeah, the non-emergencies.
Yeah, the non-emergencies, 96, 40. The emergency calls were 12,09, and the total calls were 10,000, and that's for January, one month. So, you know, we don't think of, you know, I guess people are calling hopefully with something that's necessary, but, you know, that's kind of what, and I thought it was kind of interesting. You know, I get a lot of numbers and a lot of reports, and, you know, it calls something for, you know, things to operate and to run, so, and even free things sometimes are really not free, you know, so, but, thanks for the question.
Thank you. Anybody else? I would like just to take a moment to recognize Trish Baker, our new DSS Director. Where is she at? Oh, there you are. Good. If you'd like, you're welcome to come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
I would prefer to answer...
I know, I put you on the spot, and don't, just so everybody can see, we've been in search of a new DSS Director for some time now, and we're glad to have you in place. And I know Josh is on the DSS Board and was...
And actually, we haven't met because I haven't been, I've had prior engagements our last two, so, meetings.
But the Board chose you, and you came well-qualified, and well-recommended, so we appreciate you being here and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I got to start right before Thanksgiving, and I've hit the floor running, if you will. Staff is wonderful. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, you know, there's a lot of challenges with NC Fast and the work we do, but staff is great, and so I've really had a pleasure to be here.
Good. And I believe you're from Wake County, is that correct?
Well, I worked in Wake County, but I've lived in Denver, North Carolina, for the last about 11 years. Before that, I lived in Concord, North Carolina.
Okay, okay.
So, I'm sort of local. My dad is from Surrey County, and so that's where I went to high school.
All right. Well, we're glad to have you on board and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we don't take many things away from Wake County very often, so...
That was a good one.
Gentlemen, you have the agenda before you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt agenda as stated.
Second. Okay. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If there's none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number one on the agenda is public comment. Has anyone signed up to speak? No one signed up to speak. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak during public comment? Okay, we'll move on to item number two, economic development update. Oh, sorry, I did forget one thing before we go to that. Gentlemen, we need to vote to excuse Commissioner or Vice Chairman Milton Campbell from the meeting. He had the previous...
I'd make a motion that we allow Commissioner Campbell's absence to be approved.
A second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that reminder. Item two on the agenda, economic development update, David Eisenhower, Alexander County EDC Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. As you noted, this is entitled "An Economic Development Update," and it's our intention that this be a monthly presentation for us, and we'll be presenting either industrial-related issues or retail-related issues. It'll be myself and/or Gary Herman, and tonight, just by coincidence, we're both on your agenda. But with my part of the agenda tonight, I want to touch on two things. And one is a quick look at employment and unemployment in Alexander County as we start this new year, and the second thing is to receive an update from one of our top employers in the county. So if we look at the unemployment numbers quickly, we're actually in pretty good shape in Alexander County. The Department of Commerce released the most recent statistics in November, and it does show that unemployment is low in Alexander County. For November, the available workforce in Alexander County was 17,322 people. Of that, 832 were listed as unemployed, which gives us an unemployment rate of 4.8%. And just for comparison purposes, if we look back to January of 2010, when things were not so good in Alexander County, the unemployment rate was 14.8%, which meant there were more than 2,500 people listed as unemployed at that time. So at 4.8%, the county is below all of our immediate surrounding counties, and in fact, 4.8% ties us for the ninth lowest unemployment rate in the state, and that's pretty amazing to me. It's the lowest that I've seen in many, many years, of course. So the low unemployment rate, it's a good thing, but it also has its own set of challenges that come along with it. Of course, it's great that as many people are working as possible, but yet it also presents a challenge to our local employers, who are trying to fill positions, or who want to expand and find new positions. So, of course, I'm not saying that I want more people unemployed, but I think it would be healthy for our local economy if the available workforce increased, if there were more people looking. There's some ways that can happen. Of course, people who are not currently in the workforce, you know, it would be great if we had a large number of qualified people that wanted to re-enter the workforce, but there's not a lot that we can do about that. Couple of things that we could have influence and are trying to have influence on is attracting more people to Alexander County. If we continue to work on improving things like lifestyle opportunities, and by that I mean opportunities for entertainment, opportunities for people to go out and do things, such as Brusher Mountain Golf Course Restaurant and Lodges, and that kind of thing, that give people additional opportunities they didn't have. If we continue to improve the quality of life in Alexander County in general, quality of life, of course, is very subjective and means different things to different people, whoever you ask, but in general, quality of life is gonna mean safety and education are almost always included in that, quality outdoor activities for people. And I think Rocky Face Park is a very good example of that kind of thing, improving Alexander County's quality of life, and bringing people to Alexander County that have never been here before, and providing a very unique recreational opportunity. We continue to improve the retail atmosphere, which will help bring more people to Alexander County potentially. We're doing that through continually stressing our buy local, which we have a commitment to continue promoting that buy local, and to work toward bringing new retail to Alexander County through the retail study that we're working on, that's only about halfway through that study, and so we're very excited and look forward to some good things actually coming out of that. Another factor that's related to workforce availability that I have to mention is the issue of out commuters. Currently, there's a large percentage of our workforce that actually drives to another county. Now, again, it's good that they're employed, but I think it's a good opportunity now, especially for people who are driving out of the county, if they want to end that drive, there are lots of opportunities inside Alexander County. I think it's good for our employers to promote the fact that they have jobs available, and that there are benefits certainly to not driving out of Alexander County. And I think, and I think that's something that we just have to continue to make sure that people are aware of. So the question becomes also, why is the unemployment rate so low in Alexander County? Well, of course, the easy answer, I think, to that is the national, state, and regional economies have all obviously improved over the past few years, and the old saying that, you know, rising tide raises all boats, and that's a true statement. But in order to take advantage of those improving economies, we have to have strong local companies that are in a position to take advantage of improving economy. If we didn't have that, our unemployment rate would not be as low as it is. So we're very fortunate, I think, that we have a lot of strong employers, both in the manufacturing sector and in retail, and it's growing. And I think it's a good opportunity tonight, since we're talking about employment and those issues, it's a good opportunity for us to hear from one of our strongest employers in Alexander County, that's been here for a long time, been critical to the positive employment that we have. And so we're very fortunate tonight to have with us Mr. Mitchell Gold, Mitchell Gold, Bob Williams, and I'm gonna turn the podium over to Mitchell to come up and give us an update on the company and what he sees in 2016. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've been here to talk about building the factory that we now have as our main plant. Well, I guess I was sort of asked to come and talk about the fact that we bought a new factory in Statesville, and that's got a few people jittery and a little freaked out. So I want to tell you that we're not leaving Alexander County. We bought a warehousing facility in Statesville because, although my preference would have been to build 300,000 square feet on our property, it would have cost about four times more to build something on our property than to buy a facility down the road. And the facility in Statesville is really nicely located, so it gets to the Highway 40 very easily and so on, but we're not going anywhere. And I wanted to make that very clear. So our employment this past year, our employees, we've increased from 604 employees to 650 employees. That's almost an 8% increase. We now have over 600,000 square feet in Alexander County, and I think most of you probably know that we have at our facility a great, healthy place to eat for our employees, we have good health care, we have daycare for our employees' children. All of these things we run at a nonprofit, so we, you know, charge our daycare, I think it's $85 or $90 a week now. We have two full-time medical professionals on site to help our employees be healthy, because frankly, I'm a little selfish. I don't want them out sick, I want them producing the orders that we have. We will, in a couple of weeks, open our 29th store in Oak Brook, Illinois, a big trophy location in one of the major shopping areas of the country. We'll then open, again, a big 12,000 or 13,000 square foot store in Scottsdale, Arizona, followed by Austin, Texas, where else are we opening this year? King of Prussia, Pennsylvania. I love the fact that I can't remember where we're opening stores, that we're opening so many, but our plan is, our plan is really to have 70 or 80 stores in the not-too-distant future. And our plan is that we can really guarantee our future by having our own retail outlets, not being dependent on retail customers that at their whim might buy from us or might buy from somebody in a different county. But our plan is to have a really secure and solid business. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I guess, yeah, I received a couple of phone calls about, you know, is Mitchell Gold moving out? We heard they, you know, bought a place in Statesville, so I'm glad you're here to put those rumors to rest, so thank you. Thank you very much for being here. One question I was interested in, where was your first retail location?
Well, it's, our first retail location that we owned was in, is in Washington, DC.
Okay.
But we had started some retail locations by having them in other people's businesses. So at ABC in New York, which is a big kind of department store in New York, we had 3,000 square feet in their store.
Okay.
And then we did some licensing arrangements throughout the country, but we ultimately came to the idea that we didn't really want a license, and we could afford, as our cash was building up, to have our own stores. So let's talk from now about unemployment, because that's a problem that we have. We've got a lot of openings. We've got a lot of openings for, not a lot for factory workers, but we have for factory workers, and we have openings for executives. Why are people leaving this county?
Well, there's a lot of reasons. There seems to be migration, that younger people are moving to the more metropolitan areas, but there's also a migration of people that are looking for jobs, you know, in Hickory or Statesville and Charlotte. But there's quite a few reasons why. I'm glad to see that you guys have job openings, and manufacturing provides well-paying jobs that offer great benefits, and you went through some of those benefits, and you seem to have a lot more than many.
We have to work hard to recruit people here.
Yeah.
We have an opening for Vice President of Sales. We have openings for design people, but I'm gonna share with you the elephant in the room. It's really interesting for me walking in here. First of all, walking in here was incredible, because this was our sewing factory at one point. We had like seven locations throughout the county, we were growing so fast, and we, you know, just really kept gobbling up buildings and putting functions in different ones. So this was a sewing building for us that really meant a lot to our business and our ability to service our customers and build our business. But when I walked in the door and saw the sign that said "No Tobacco and No Guns," this has changed. Can you imagine 20 years ago, coming into a building in Alexander County, and it's saying "No Tobacco"? I remember when I first moved down here, I went to Winston-Salem, and we stayed in a hotel, and as we were going up in the elevator in the high-rise, somebody got on and was smoking, and I thought, God, don't they see the "No Smoking" sign? And I looked for the "No Smoking" sign to nicely point it out. There was no "Not Smoking" sign. Not only that, there was an ashtray in the elevator. So times have really changed here, and I'm gonna be really honest and say to you that I would love someday to see a sign out front here, and that this community stood for, that said "No More Bigotry." It is inexcusable that in today's world, the kind of bigotry exists in this county that happened when the high school wanted to put in a Gay-Straight Alliance. It's inexcusable, because for a 14- or 15-year-old kid that is in that high school, that's struggling with the orientation that God gave them, that they've got especially, and I call it out, especially some preachers in town, spreading rumors and protesting the fact that these kids should have a safe place to go and have camaraderie, it is, that is 1942. It's so long ago, and I just want to encourage everybody that's here, I have a New Year's resolution that I made last year and I failed, but this year I'm gonna keep trying at it. And my resolution is that religious institutions have to stop teaching that homosexuality is a sin. It is outdated, it's misguided, it's ill-informed, but worse, it is unbelievably harmful. And if you ever wonder, when you hear about a kid committing suicide, why they're doing it, that's the reason they're doing it. When they've got their parents and their church telling them that they are broken, that's why they're doing it. There's a young fellow named Tyler Clemente, who you might remember, some years ago jumped off the George Washington Bridge. Do you remember that? Anybody remember that? Well, he jumped off the George Washington Bridge, actually, it was five years ago, and I've gotten to know his parents, and his parents started a foundation, and their foundation has started a project called Day One. And Day One, they want schools, churches, counties, everybody, to proclaim that a gay person is safe in that county. And the reason they did it is because this young, precious life, 18-years-old, he would have been alive today if his parents on Day One had said, "We are going to accept and embrace our child regardless of their orientation," and if they had brought him up in a church that didn't teach him he was broken. So I only want to say to everybody that every chance I get, I want to protect the kids in this community, and I look for the day when, there doesn't have to be a sign, but that it, that the kind of virulent bigotry that does exist here, that anybody that has a chance to call it out and confront it, that if you belong to a church that teaches such a thing, leave and go to another one. There's other ones in town. And this community could really be the shining light. We, as a company, are a shining light in this country. I mean, we've really built down the street an extraordinary company that's recognized by all the, you know, New York Times, Architectural Digest, as a shining light of style and quality and service, but I want everything in this county to be that way. So thank you very much, I appreciate it, and we have a commitment to this county, but it works both ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, number three on the agenda, the Goodwill Store opening. Call on Gary Herman, Small Business Development Coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thanks for having us here tonight. Of course, most people are probably aware of the upcoming opening of the Goodwill Goodbyes Store. It's in the Walmart Shopping Center, located between Dollar Tree and Subway. So I'd like to invite the public, as well as all of our Board and Manager and Clerk, to come to the ribbon-cutting. It's this Thursday morning at 8:45, and the store will open to the public at 9 o'clock. So you're saying, what is a Goodbyes Store? Well, this is a first for Goodwill of Northwest North Carolina. They have a 31-county area, and this is the first Goodbyes Store that they've attempted. So basically, this is bigger savings than most people are accustomed to at a Goodwill Store. It's almost like a clearance store. So go in, what kind of prices are you looking at? You're probably looking at $1.75 for adult clothing, $1 for children's clothing, and they also offer some home decor. Other items are available as well, basically about a 50% discount. So as I said, it's the first of 31, first store of its kind in 31 counties, and it's basically a concept that they're testing in smaller communities. So we'll see how it works out. I think it's gonna do well here. Initially, the new store will employ eight to 10 people. Will be open Monday through Saturday from 8:00 to 8:00, and Sunday, 1:00 to 6:00, and you can also take your donations to the store at Goodwill. Of course, Goodwill Industries of Northwest North Carolina, it's a nonprofit organization. It's been serving our community since 1926, and they fund employment and training programs that help people find hope, opportunity, and jobs, and they do this through the donations from our citizens. Recognized nationally as one of the most efficient charities, channeling 90% of revenues to mission and sustainability. They serve more than 32,000 people a year in Northwest North Carolina. Goodwill Industries of Northwest North Carolina is one of 165 independent, community-based Goodwill organizations that make up Goodwill Industries International. If you want more information, you can go to goodwillnwc.org. Again, that's the Goodwill Goodbyes Store. We're excited to have it. Grand opening is this Thursday. So I'd like to see some of you guys come out, if you can. I know y'all have busy schedules, we'll be there. They have their own pair of scissors. We're just gonna take a photo and help promote this new store here. So excited to see a little progress, and I'll tell you, it's been a busy week here in the office. Last week in 2016, shaping up to look like a good year, I think. We're optimistic. Any questions?
None. Just like I said, appreciate the work y'all do, and I'm glad to see a retail store that's coming, and, you know, we've got the Dollar Generals that I've had multiple people asking me about, especially in Sugarloaf, and, you know, as far as I know, they are still coming.
Yeah, the one across from Sugarloaf School, and one down on 16 South.
I'm hoping that's the cork coming off of the bottle, that may be some other things... There may be some other things will, you know, will follow for Alexander County.
We certainly are also running. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, item four on the agenda, the 2016 North Carolina Governor's Crime Commission Grant Application. And the person that was gonna present that, his wife is in labor right now, so what do we need to do about that?
We'll table it for another time, discuss later.
All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion, we table that until another meeting.
Okay. Is motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I hope our report works well.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number five, Recommendation for Engineering Services for Sure Tape Sewer Project. Calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received proposals for engineering services for the Sure Tape Sewer Project. They were open on January the 4th, 2016. The Alexander County received ARC or Appalachian Regional Commission Grant, actually 23%, and a Golden Leaf Foundation, which is 77%, for a total of a little over $1.2 million for this project. We received engineering proposals from four companies, Clayton Engineering and Design, McGill Associates, Hustley, McCormick, and Wallace, and West Consultants. Proposals are for engineering, design, and construction oversight. You have that information in your packet. The recommendation from staff is to approve West Consultants. They provide engineering services, they provided engineering services for water and sewer projects in the general area. They're also very familiar with the existing utilities. They do a lot of work in this area and they are also very familiar with the subsurface conditions. The schedule for the project would be about five months to prepare the engineering documents to bid, one to two months for review and approval by state regulatory agencies, and nine months for construction. So we're talking about completion of this project in spring, around April of next year, 2017, which we're just getting used to saying 2016, but that's the schedule. I'd also like to thank County Engineer Darrell Robertson for his work on this and also EDC Director David Eisenhower also. At this time, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. If not, we need a motion to approve West Associates as the engineer for this project.
Just as a comment, I'd looked at this before the meeting and by the different, by the variance difference, whatever you wanna call it, between the four numbers, you'd almost think a couple of them were bidding different projects than, you know, by the number differences, you wouldn't think they were all bidding on the same project.
But they were.
But, yeah. I mean, I know, yeah. I just, it's amazing to me, the, the difference in the, in the pricing.
Yes.
Have, has West done work for the county before or have they?
They've done, yes, and they do a lot of work in Taylorsville for their wastewater. They're also very, very familiar with the sewer needs in the county.
Okay.
And they're also within the budget.
That's good.
Yeah.
I think some of these companies just bid them high and hope they're gonna get it. I don't know. Yeah. One of them in particular.
I mean, 'cause when you've got, yeah, I, you know, when you've got one company that's three times as expensive as, as two others, I guess they just.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I make a motion that we approve West Consultants Incorporated for the engineering of the Sure Tape Sewer Expansion Project in Stony Point. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
All right, motion and second, is there any discussion?
I, I just wanna say, this has been a long time coming and most people realize that for a long time, Sure Tape has operated their own sewer system on their facility, at their facility. And this is another way that Alexander County Government has the opportunity, along with these grants, provide services to our existing industries. And I think they're extremely one of the vital resources that this county has for jobs for our citizens. And I think this is a very fine project that is getting ready to happen and it's been a long time coming. I think they've asked for it for at least, ever since I've been here, and I've been here almost 12 years, and they've, they've asked for it for a long time and we finally have the opportunity to get it done.
Well, I know they need, you know, that'd be a great benefit to that area. Other businesses will be able to use this and it's gonna make a big difference to Stony Point area in the future. So this is a huge economic development tool for that area and you'll see the benefits of it in the years to come. And it keeps, keeps them located there, hopefully, and keeps them able to grow. So we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Number six on the agenda, Authorized Contract for Mitchell Gold-Bob Williams Natural Gas Project. Calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bids were open for the gas pipeline for Mitchell Gold plus Bob Williams on November 10th, 2015. Advertisements were sent to 11 contractors and proposals were submitted by two contractors. Pipeline contractors are extremely busy and prices have been increasing significantly, so when we opened the bids, we had to go back to Department of Commerce and they authorized additional funding. So the total project cost is 352,000, of which the county share is 88,000. The lowest bid was Aplene-Boring for 315,075 and they, they were low, the two bidders that we received. And you have that information, a little bit of information in your packet about it, but we recommend Aplene and Associates, Aplene-Boring for, I'm sorry, Aplene-Boring for the construction of the gas pipeline for Mitchell Gold Project.
I got a question. What, what is their background? Do they, have they done any business in this county before?
No, they, I don't believe they have.
Okay, all right, so.
But they've done a lot of, they've done a lot of pipeline work.
Okay, all right. They're not a startup, new company?
No, they're not.
Okay. Oh, 'cause I'm not familiar with them.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the Mitchell Gold-Bob Williams contract for the natural gas.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Well, this is another project that's going to add to that facility that will continue to increase and help them in their fuel costs down there, especially since right now they're using propane heaters or using propane to heat the facility with, and this will be a tremendous asset to that facility. So that's another economic boost for Alexander County there at Mitchell Gold.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item seven on the agenda, County Sales Tax Revenue for 2015-2016 Budget Year Report. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the most updated county sales tax revenue report for 2015-2016. So, so far in this fiscal year, we've collected $1.3 million, $1,366,647 to be exact. That's a little over 35% of the budget collected with a little over 33% of the year expired. We budgeted $3,891,000 for fiscal year 2015-2016 and we're almost 9% ahead of last year, so that's encouraging. Those are encouraging numbers.
And we just collected the September sales tax, is that correct?
That's right.
Runs three months behind.
Yes.
All right, any questions?
Like the increase, keep it, you know, let's keep spending local money and, you know, that helps to lessen our tax bills, so that's a good thing.
Every dollar spent locally helps offset property taxes, so makes a big difference. Okay, any other questions, comments? We'll move on to item number eight, Board Appointments and Reappointments. Calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Building Services Advisory Committee appoint John Pilkington for one year, reappoint Brent Fox, Larry Jenkins, Mark Foy, Tony Lackey, David Land, Darrell Robertson, Ryan Mayberry, Lynn Teague, Bert Gibson, Seth Harris for one-year terms. Library Board of Trustees, reappoint Sarah Lael for three years, appoint Andrew Ferguson and Amy Bucknam. Planning and Zoning Commission, reappoint Don Harrington, Sam Davis for two years. Finance Committee, appoint Ryan Mayberry, Milton Campbell. We have the following vacancies. We still have a vacancy on the Building Services Advisory Committee. We have one vacancy on the Library Board of Trustees, two on the Health Board, one at large in the engineering vacancy, two for the Town Planning Board of Adjustment, and they must live in the ETJ, and one of, one on the Region E Adult Care and Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
Gentlemen, if you'd please, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve those as listed on the county appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All right. Well, I'll say, I mean, this is discussion, but, you know, I would just say, and I think this is echoed from all of us, we appreciate these people being willing to serve. You know, in any community, whether it be a small community or a community as small as a neighborhood to a community as large as a major city, you have a very small percentage of the people that are willing to pick up the workload for the many. And, you know, these, these are just some examples of places where people are willing to spend their time, you know, they spend their money driving their cars to meetings and do it hopefully to better the community. So, you know, I think, I think everybody up here would agree with me, just saying thank you to these folks as well as any, you know, as well as anybody else serving on any other community committee.
All right, I got a point into the Finance Committee and I guess I didn't show it to that meeting, 'cause I didn't know that was gonna happen, but I'll, I'll do it. That's fine. That's what they say, don't miss the meetings or...
Thankfully, we have Jamie to remind us of most of the meetings we're supposed to attend. All right, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item number nine on the agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 22 through 25. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a few budget amendments for tonight. To budget amendment number 22, to increase information technology budget for additional disk storage space needed to maintain the county's information technology network and to increase the JCPC budget for additional funding due to the revised 2015-2016 state appropriation for juvenile crime prevention council programs. The local JCPC board approved this funding at their December 2015 meeting, and that's budget amendment number 22. Number 23 is to increase the Health Department budget for evidence-based strategy state funds, and that's the budget amendment number 23. Number 24 is to increase the 911 Fund budget for server migration project, moving data to the new server system, and that's from the 911 fund balance. And number 25 is to decrease the Planning Department budget, basically terminating the contract with the COG for planning assistance in March and decreasing the tax office budget for a position that we did not fill and increasing the Inspections Department budget, hiring a director to oversee planning and inspections and to hire a clerical staff person to train with the current inspections clerical employee who is retiring at the end of 2016. The director's position would supervise building inspections, code enforcement, planning, zoning, work in minimum housing, also provide oversight to the permitting process and also work closely with the minimum housing, on the minimum housing ordinance, and also work very closely with the Planning and Zoning Board. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions about any of those budget amendments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions?
On number 22 for the juvenile crime, is that money that they were awarded or is that, that's an increase?
That's state money from up, come to us, yes.
State money that just adds to it. Okay.
On number 25, I just, I just wanna say, and this may sound crazy, but I wanna say good job because we are consolidating, but also creating a supervi, I guess you'd say supervisory position that is needed. And, you know, our net, our net true cost is only 10,000, you know, $10,500. And that's, to me, that's, that's, that's using money wisely.
Yeah, they're taking on responsibilities of the super, of an entire department, supervising a department, plus the, already the responsibilities that they had through the contract that we had with the Western Piedmont Council Government, so.
Right.
It'll be a good thing.
Absolutely. All right, is there a motion? I make a motion to approve budget amendments number 22, 23, 24, and 25 as stated.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item number 10 on the agenda is Other Business, County Managers' Report. Calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things to, to mention and to, one is you have in your packet the budget calendar. We've presented that information to you earlier, but our budget for 2016-2017 will kick off on February the 12th. We have a lot of meetings and are already looking at numbers for the 2016-2017 budget, but that's the meeting that we have, the information budget, information meeting that we have with department heads and outside agencies, and that's when we start, so just wanna mention that to you. In your packet, you also have some information from Smoky Mountain Center, LME/MCO, and the County Commissioners Advisory Board, which Commissioner Yoder serves on, and there's an upcoming meeting for mental health services in our region, and just wanna mention that. Also, a lot of work is going on right now. Planning continues for the Fourth Annual Rocky Fest, which is scheduled for April 23rd, 2016, at Rocky Face Park. I just wanna get that date out there. There's already some advertising... There's already some advertising going on for that purpose. But one of the main things I wanted to ask tonight was to, we need to schedule a finance meeting with the full board. The only two dates, I think, that consider probably, I mean, you can consider any time, it seems that we follow a Monday schedule, is either January twenty-fifth or February the eighth. And granted, we have a meeting, our regular meeting is February first, we could actually have a, a longer meeting if you want to do it, but it'll take some time. We need to, there's some highlights from the audit I'd like to review with you. I'd like to give you a review, do a six-month financial report. I'd also like to talk about projects, the current projects that we have, and also any future projects. There's also some water, possible water projects we wanted, the staff wanted to talk with you about. So, I don't know if you want to schedule a meeting for January twenty-fifth or, or February the eighth, but, and again, we could do it after the February first meeting, but it'll, it'll be, this will not be a thirty-minute thing, this will be an hour, hour and a half at least. I mean, a good bit of information financially, so you can see the status of the county budget. There's some things in the audit I just want to point out, and some other things, as we move forward into the sixteen, sixteen, seventeen budget. So...
Mr. Chairman, and I, I know we've talked about having a work session since October, and there's, in my opinion, a couple of things that need to be, that we, you know, we need to look at, and, you know, I, I would hope we could go ahead and do that in reasonably, you know, reasonable amount of time.
Which I think we could do all that together.
My preference would be to do it all together.
Right, which is, yeah. I mean, that, that makes both sense. So, you want to schedule a work session after the, after our next regular meeting, is that what you're saying? Okay. I mean, I'm good for tomorrow night.
Well, I think we'll do it January twenty-fifth. I think the sooner we do it, the better. I think putting it off any longer, we put it off, put it off, we've talked about it, talked about it. We really need to do it January twenty-fifth, and have two different meetings, especially discussing the budget, some of the things that are in there, the audit and all that, because there'll be more questions come up than, than a three or four-hour meeting. With all the other stuff on there, I think you'd lose your patience and your understanding of exactly what's going on. I think just having the budget, and, and doing the audit in one separate thing, talking about the finances, then have your regular scheduled meeting. I think it'd be more important to do it that way.
What day did you say?
Twenty-fifth.
January twenty-fifth is a Monday, it's two weeks from tonight.
How long do you anticipate our meeting to be on the first by itself?
I, I don't, I don't know, but I would say an hour and a half, something like that. Our regular meetings aren't too long.
Yeah, that's fine. We can do the twenty-fifth. You guys want to do it then?
Okay. It should be okay with me. I've got a granddaughter that's going to arrive sometime that week, so...
That takes priority.
Yeah.
Grandbabies are special.
Yeah, you got to take care of families, so...
Twenty-fifth will be fine.
Should be good.
Can you, can we make a motion to set that?
I, I make a motion that we have a work session on January twenty-fifth.
Second.
Any discussion?
Let's have it here for you.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. We do need to have a closed session per North Carolina General Statute one-four-three dash three-one, three-one-eight point eleven, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. I will make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
And got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.